Hi there, can I be heard?
Yes Nelson.
Good. Alright, it looks like it's seven o'clock, so we can get started. Want to welcome everybody to the March 16th, 2021 zoning board of appeals meeting. We have a smaller agenda than we've had in the past, but we do have one application to review and then our meeting minutes from last meeting. At this time, I like to open up the meeting to what we call the open forum, and this is for any participant who would like to ask about the function of the zoning board, any comment regarding the zoning board, and this would be items not on the agenda, those will be addressed later in the meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and open the open forum at this point. And we'll give a saccharine too for any participants to comment if they so choose. Okay, I guess not hearing any interest in the open forum. I'm going to go ahead and close the open forum at this point. And we can address our first application item of business. And again, this would be a request for a side yard and a front yard variance for the construction of a 24 by 24 foot garage, a detached garage. I think if I recall, one of the concerns was whether this would qualify with for the reduced lot provision, but because that only applies to single family dwellings, this is more or less considered an accessory building than the existing variance or setbacks, the 40 foot from the front and 40 foot from the side would be the ones that we would be considering. And I think if I recall from last meeting as well, that we came to an agreement that the garage be moved four foot off the east side yard lot line. Again, so that would be Lisa reasonable distance from the side yard lot line, but that it would not be too far into the center of the property where it would be kind of obscuring the front of the existing house. So Donald Weber, if you recall, that's pretty much what we discussed last meeting.
Yes, I do recall that, yes.
Okay. So in light of that, then the front yard setback would be 20 feet for the front, and then the side yard setback is going to be based on the 40 foot requirement. So that's going to be a 36 foot variance on the side. So in lieu of that, I board members, are there any questions regarding what I just laid out as far as the the requests?
That makes sense.
Okay. So if there's no questions by the board members, if somebody would make a motion to open the public hearing regarding this matter.
Alright, I will move that we open the hearing regarding the front yard and the side yard variance for Donald and Teresa Weber.
Okay, and somebody would second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
John.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open. If there are any participants that have any questions about the this application and the request for the variances, they're entitled to speak up now, if you just give us your name, if you're indicating that you want to do that.
Hi, this is John and Michelle Sislow.
Hi.
We live right next door.
Okay.
And we just wanted to say that we were totally fine with the two feet, so I don't know if that could be considered at this time, but two feet is fine for us, it's probably more aesthetically pleasing to have it two feet over, so we just wanted to comment on that.
Okay. I'd be honest, normally, again, you would have to have 40 feet, but you know, these lots are smaller. And the two feet seemed a little close to the property line, so we were thinking that the four feet would provide for a little wiggle room. And then again, not move the garage, you know, where it would be in front of the existing house structure, so.
Again, it's better than what it is now, because right now it's over on our property a little bit, so.
Right, yeah.
The two feet is better.
If you look at the property around the lake, the roadside of the property is pretty much useless to us. It's all the lakeside that is what is desired, so for them to put a garage two feet off of our property line is no burden, it doesn't bother us.
Okay, the only concern that the board has is that that is a fairly substantial variance request. So we try to grant, you know, what we would consider the minimum, which is why, you know, just moving it over the two extra feet reduces, you know, the variance request to 36 feet, which is still pretty excessive.
That's understood, but we just want to let you know, as property owners, we're good with what they want to do next to our house.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
We also discussed this with our neighbor prior to this meeting, and we looked at the project and by putting this garage, those little, as it is, two feet aesthetically, it's going to be in front of windows, which we already have in its structure here. And we felt two feet was going to look pretty good, not perfect, but pretty good, so we discussed it with our neighbor, and he's all for the two feet. I'm not stepping on anybody's feet, I'm just trying to make it look aesthetically pleasing also.
Understood, but but again, from the, you know, it is a fairly excessive, you know, variance that we would be granting even at, you know, with the four feet. So generally, you know, we have kind of a ballpark, we don't like to grant more than 50%, and this kind of, you know, exceeds that to a degree that we would not normally grant, but again, you know, the lake properties are smaller and a lot of the constructions on the properties themselves, again, don't always adhere to existing property lines, so again, we just, and that's why we asked if we can get the extra two feet, that gives, you know, enough of a buffer, you know, and then again, doesn't, you know, obscure, you know, the front of your property as well.
Could we compromise with three feet? We do have a culvert that runs through our property that saves everybody from flooding on the opposite side, and we couldn't put the garage on the other side either, can we compromise with three feet at least?
Okay, board members, are we comfortable with that?
Fine with three feet.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yes.
So then again, so at this point with the three feet, we're looking at a 37 foot variance.
I have a question.
Sure.
What is the difference between them using the two feet versus the three feet? I know it's a substantial, but if they're saying that they're okay with the two feet, and it's more aesthetically pleasing at two feet, why do we need to make it three?
Well, again, because, you know, we, as the, as a zoning board, we'd be concerned about setting a precedent of approving variances that are beyond what would be normally considered, you know, say reasonable, but this is kind of a unique situation. So I mean, again, that's why I asked, if we, the three feet we could do, and more of the board members seem to be comfortable with that, as do the property owners and the adjacent property owners, so does that make sense?
I mean, it makes sense, but if it's, we're worried about being aesthetically pleasing as well, we don't want it to look weird for the neighbors. That's why I was thinking if they're actually saying it would look better if we were at the two feet rather than at the three, why not just leave it at two feet? I understand what what you're saying about being it so large, but what difference does one foot make when it's making it better to look at?
Well, yeah, but I'm, again, you know, it just, that's a pretty slim, you know, distance between the, you know, existing property line and where the structure is going to be placed. You know, it also to me accounts for some wiggle room, you know, because obviously there's, you know, a fair amount of precision as far as where the lot line is now established, but you know, that's still not a lot of space.
My current garage is on its property.
Right.
Right thing here, and make it aesthetically pleasing, it is also a private road, it's dirt road.
I know that, but again, you're right, it's going to remedy the fact that your garage is on their property. But again, the issue also is, you know, the, it's a fairly substantial variance. So again, if everybody's comfortable with the three feet, then I think we can justify that. Again, it normally, you know, this wouldn't even come to play, but these lots are smaller, they're what we consider pre-existing. You know, a lot of this stuff was placed even prior to, you know, the variance or the side yard and front yard setbacks as they exist now, so.
And if we didn't have that culvert, we probably wouldn't even be having this meeting right now, but that stops us from putting the garage where it would be normally placed on the other side of the property.
Oh, right, yeah, but even still, you know, the, you know, the property still is fairly narrow, where that you may even have to, even if it were on the other side, you still may be, you know, in need of a variance, even though it would be less than what you're requesting now based on where you're looking to place it.
This is my first ever variance. This is my first ever variance negotiation, shall we call it. Do you guys vote on this, or are you the mediator?
I'm just the chairman, but there are board members, and we do collectively.
Two foot and three foot and see how it comes out? Wouldn't that be fair?
Well, no, we usually don't approach it that way.
No.
We kind of, you know, and well, I know, and again, my concern, especially as chairman, that, you know, we don't set a precedent where we are granting, you know, significant variances. So we try to, you know, minimize them as much as possible. And again, where I know the two-foot was, you know, considered at one point, and then we kind of discussed with the four, but I think the three-foot would be a reasonable compromise.
Well, there we have it, okay.
Okay, I mean, you know, I'm just explaining what, I mean, I obviously understand.
Three, I'd rather have the two, but if that's what I get, that's what I get.
Yeah, I mean, and again, if you're comfortable with the three, and then, like I say, I have to kind of consider, you know, as the board, you know, is responsible for granting variances, that they seem to be as reasonable as possible. Not only from, you know, the property owners, but just from the town in general, so. So, board members, are we, again, comfortable with the three-foot?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right, so I think, is the public hearing is still open, correct?
Right.
Okay. I don't, are there any other comments regarding this variance request via the public hearing? If that be the case, if somebody wants to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
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 Dan.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Dan. Dan.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Okay, so at this point, I want to run through the the findings and factors considered. Number one being whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No.
Okay. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance?
No.
Okay. Whether the requested variance is substantial?
Yes.
Yes. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No.
Was the alleged difficulty self-created?
No.
More so than always.
Right, and again, by virtue of the fact that these are what are considered pre-existing undersized lots. So given that as board members, is anybody prepared to make motions for the variances regarding this property? If not, I'm going to go ahead and do it unless somebody else is. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to grant Donald C. Weber of 319 Shore Road, Patterson, New York, 12137, a front yard setback variance of twenty feet, and an east side yard variance of thirty-seven feet on a pre-existing undersized lot to construct a twenty-four by twenty-four-foot one-story detached garage, per the findings of section fourteen-point-five-point-two-B, providing a building permit be obtained within six months and all other aspects of the ordinance be followed.
Nelson?
Yeah.
Pattersonville.
Oh, what did I say, Patterson?
Yes.
All right, that's New Jersey, right, this is New York.
You throwing us out?
All right, would that change, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Nelson.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Diane. Hi.
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 Link.
Hi.
Okay, so you're all set. You just need to see Dale for obtaining the building permit?
Great.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, you're welcome. All right. So the next thing we need to look at are the meeting minutes from our last meeting. I'm not seeing anything that jumps out at me as far as in need of correction.
I'll make the motion that we approve the meeting minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Okay. So I sent as an attachment to the emails the two suggested variance motion form, formats. I think Jonathan, you had a comment about in the public hearing motion format?
Yeah.
And what was that?
Basically, I really think it should read, we either set them for seven o'clock or seven o'clock or as soon thereafter as they can be heard, I think the idea. I think the language as you had written in there was something like or thereabouts, or something that
Right.
Yes, yeah. Sounds proper.
Okay, no, I went based on what you had used before, but that's fine, but this is the opportunity now to fine-tune this, so. So do you have that form in front of you to look at?
No, I'd have to.
All right, why don't
Because it's in here, I'd have to bring up the email.
All right, why don't you do this, then, just make the correction that you think is reasonable, and then just, you know, send it back, you can send it to me and we'll basically formalize it.
Okay, yeah, no, I kind of thought that was what I did in the last email, just change it to seven PM. Either set every public hearing for seven PM with the understanding that we'll take them in order, or set it for quote, seven PM or as soon thereafter as it can be heard.
Okay, well, because right now, I've got it in front of me, it says, I make a motion to set a public hearing on, and then we have the date and the time, and then again, we had used that phrase, or thereabout for why don't we just eliminate the thereabout, I don't
I mean, I think if we just set it for seven PM, there'll be the understanding that not everybody's going to go at once, and
Right, all right.
Right, I actually really liked your, your second wording there.
Seven PM or soon thereafter.
Soon thereafter.
Soon thereafter, yeah. Back in my legal career, which was like thirty years ago, it seems to me that was standard legal.
Okay, all right, so then, and that, you had included that in the email, the later email you had sent me, all right, I'll amend this, and then again, I'll that should remedy this. And like I said, last meeting, that if you have the forms, basically, you know, especially the variance motion form and the public hearing motion format, you can prepare it yourself, like you print one out, and then that's what I did, you can write it all out, that way, if you're called upon, or then you can volunteer and feel comfortable that you're conveying all the information. Because, you know, it's hard to do it when you're in the midst of the meeting trying to write all that stuff down.
Right.
So, if that makes sense, then, you know, I think that'll work, and again, so that others, you know, should participate in this as well.
Yeah, because for a while now, it's just been Jonathan.
Yeah, as far as the, yes, the public hearing. But even the, you know, the other stuff too, everybody should, that way you'll get a better handle on, again, just, you know, how the motions, you know, function as far as the meeting is concerned. Other than that, so Melissa, I didn't see the meeting minutes go up on the town website?
Um, so I sent it to Brandy.
Yeah, I know, okay.
They're not in the office all the time, so.
Yeah, okay.
Again.
All right, but now, again, the lobby is open upstairs to the public?
Downstairs.
Just downstairs?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not there every day, and they have different hours, but we're there Monday through Friday.
Okay. The reason this came up, I had gotten an email, and somebody noted that the minutes from the previous meeting from February was not posted. And by rights, the open meeting law requires that they be posted and made available to the public. Now, in the past, when, you know, the town hall was more accessible, then you just post them on the bulletin boards, and that met that requirement. But because of the conditions that were kind of operating in as now, then they need to be posted on the, you know, the town website. So, but again, you know, we did our part of it, again, so we'll just make sure.
They, they were scammed for two days after, and then I sent it to them, and I sent them again, so.
Okay.
I mean, I did my part.
I know you did. You know, and again, it's not like we're ignoring it, but, you know, by rights, you know, and it was mentioned in the email that we need to comply with that, so.
I get it.
Okay. Other than that, anybody else have anything of note or? All right, so Link, you get to make the motion that we can put this to bed?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
I'll second.
I was late. I'm not going to describe what I was doing.
Yeah, please spare us.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Diane. Hi. John.
Hi.
I think we're good to go, so. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.